All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our February 12, 2018 regularly scheduled work session. And tonight, we've got three items on our agenda. A public comment is allowed that is germane to each agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card. And if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority of said organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone, stating your name and address for the record. And public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Now, I do believe we have a public comment, just a general public comment, which I'd like to allow if the council's okay with before we get started. So Sudhi, if you'd please call that item.
Our first item this evening is discussion of revisions to the rules and procedures.
I'm sorry, Sudhi, if you'd please just call that first public comment, general public comment.
Okay, the general public is Barbara Mangano.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Barbara Mangano, 1845, High Grove Club Drive, Wood Valley subdivision. My property is adjacent to the fairway of the Milton Country Club's 15th hole. I have some concerns and many questions about Milton Country Club, its purchase by the city, and its future. Number one, with respect to Mayor Lockwood's words at the January 22 meeting about the city's acquisition of Milton Country Club, quote, "This has come along fairly quickly as far as the opportunity was brought to us and we were able to purchase it. I am not confident that there was time for sufficient due diligence and research prior to the purchase to consider continued golf operations on the course. What options were considered, documented, and discarded? Could the trail options and golf operations coexist? Were Milton Country Club members included in discussions for these options? Could a golf management company lease and operate a nine-hole, walking-only course? If there has been a cost-benefit analysis of any of these options, where is it published? If not, then moving forward on RFPs that exclude a golf operation does not include the interest of all stakeholders in the neighborhood and community." Number two, if there is to be no maintained property right outside my back door, what will there be? I am concerned about collapsing retaining walls, water runoff from the course onto adjacent property, tree maintenance and debris, grass height, snake infestation, mosquito control, and whatever else may come about from a state of abandonment that is sure to follow during the planning period for the property. The city acquired the property without a plan or a budget, but the property requires some level of maintenance. Any private property owner would be expected to do the same. Number three, as a neighborhood resident, I am 100% supportive of efforts to provide a swim tennis facility. I think both are viable programs. They add value to Wood Valley and the community, and they provide recreational opportunities for children and adults. All of this was true for golf and MCC, but its viability was killed by poor ownership and management practices over the last several years, not because of the national trend in declining golf course operations. Finally, there is a retaining wall outside of my fence that is about to collapse. Unfortunately, this state of disrepair began about two years ago when course maintenance was well into its downward spiral. If left as it is, this wall will eventually collapse into my fence and cause further damage. Who in the city of Milton can come out and view this situation with me to determine next steps and schedule for remediation? Thank you for the opportunity to bring these concerns to your attention.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Sudhi, if you would... Is there any public comment on the first agenda item?
There is not, sir.
Okay, you'll just call that item and then resound it.
First item is discussion of revisions to rules and procedures for city council meetings. Mr. Paul Mitchell.
Thank you, City Council. Milton, like many jurisdictions, has a public comment opportunity whereby citizens interested in the matter can come and speak. The issue has come up as to whether emails should be read in the meetings in their entirety. And so, the county clerk completed a survey of nearby municipalities and found that the more commonly observed practice, if not the universal practice, is to not read emails at the meeting. Really, there needs to be consistency in the practice of whether the emails will be read in their entirety or whether they'll simply be mentioned. And so, it's the city attorney's recommendation that a procedure be adopted whereby all emails be treated the same. That could be something as simple as having the name of the sender read into the record, a tally of emails that were pro or con to a specific issue being read into the record. And of course, the emails themselves would become a part of the public record and subject to the Open Records Act requests and things like that. And they would also be available for the review in their entirety by members of the city council. However, it may do a disservice to those people who make the... go through the trouble of coming to the meeting to actually speak live in the meeting. And in fact, the rules of the city specifically address speaking at a meeting, not writing in by email or participating by email. And so, those are some of the issues that we've looked at in the city attorney's office. Again, trying to provide some consistency while also providing an opportunity for the citizens to be heard.
Okay, and, you know, as most of you guys know, we brought this up. We have in the past. Now, I'll be the first to say, probably to a weakness, I'm always one that wants to hear from the public. And as the council has been very gracious, whenever people come to speak and need more time or more people want to speak, I feel, and I'm sure the council agrees, that we want to hear what you have to say. So, we certainly want to hear what the public says. Give you plenty of opportunity. In the past, we have had a few times where somebody might send an email in and ask that it be read into the public, which we have done. And then there have also been times where we had not, because we maybe we had gotten several, 20, 30 emails or whatever, and we just read out the yays or nays or the positive or negative, whatever position in the name. So, again, the discussion was brought up because, and with the city attorney's advice and some work with clerk is to, you know, we really need to set a policy on, you know, moving forward so people know what to expect. And I would say, I totally agree with the city attorney's comment about, you know, folks that, and I want to give utmost respect to folks that come to a meeting and are willing to speak, and we want to hear you, and, you know, versus somebody just sending, pushing a button and sending an email. So, you know, and again, the other thing I want everybody to know is the public... If you send an email to the council or staff about an agenda item, whether it's read into the record or not, number one, it's in the record. But number two, I know for myself, and I think the council would agree, we read every email. So, there's... It doesn't mean if it's read into the, you know, during the meeting that it has any more effect. We read those, receive those emails and read them. So, again, out of, in my opinion, due respect to the folks that come to the meeting, I believe they should, you know, get more time here, if that makes any sense. But I'll open up for discussion. Rick?
And I agree in concept with that. The only question I've got, and I don't have an answer, how you would mitigate this or how you would handle it. But if someone physically can't make it here, let's say there's, whether it's handicap, homebound, or whatever, and they want to have their comments made public, I don't know how you differentiate between that. But that was some of the feedback I got is, well, hold it. What if I can't physically be there? How do you make sure? I know we all, like the mayor said, we all read the notes and we'll go through them and try to respond. Question is, what if someone physically, there's no way they could make it here? How do we ensure if they didn't have a chance to actually come here and speak because they couldn't?
Joe?
Yeah, and that's a good point, Rick. I think the thing that we're... I don't want to say missing out on, because I think everybody has a good grasp of this. But the fact that you send an email to the city puts it into the public domain. And an open records request, if somebody were to ask, "Hey, I want to see all the emails that was ever sent, all the communications that was sent to the council related to this item," that email becomes one of the things that would have to be disclosed in that open records request. So, the fact that somebody actually sends an email or a communication, and I'm not sure if we scan letters in or how we treat...
We do.
You know, pieces of paper, but I would imagine that we do. Those all become fair sources of information for any future requests and any understanding of where did people really think, where was their mind on a particular item? Now, if they sit at home and they watch the city council meeting over the internet, I mean, that's good. But if they're not sending us email on a particular issue, then they're just sort of a passive participant. Certainly, those folks, and we have plenty of folks who send us email, those are the active participants. And like the mayor said, there's not an email that we get on any subject that I don't think the council treats as important. We read those emails, we respond to those emails, we take those emails into consideration when we're trying to figure out how to manage a particular issue or situation. So, from my point of view, reading an email into the record is a duplicative act and is not really required. It certainly doesn't increase or heighten the value of the information, because I think we already are treating that as a very high-value piece of data. So, to me, it just seems redundant.
So, I wanted to thank Sudhi for the information that was provided to us before. That was very thorough. And I think that going forward, we have been inconsistent. And I think with the last meeting in which this was brought forward, my position was, because we had been inconsistent, that we needed to err on the side of being very, you know, hearing everything on that night. Going forward, based on the information that we've gotten, I'm comfortable, you know, now not reading emails into the record. But I do think that we should provide a mechanism to allow for a resident that is not able to be here to have their public comment read into the record by a neighbor or someone that is, you know, we can verify through perhaps an affidavit. And that way, we are certain that we're not leaving out a certain population that, you know, doesn't do email or can't get here or is on vacation. As soon as we make that notification to the public, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, anybody else? No?
I like the idea of an affidavit for someone that, if they have that happen. We've had that before with requests, yeah. So, that's an idea that hadn't been brought up in this conversation. So, that makes sense. And I agree with Councilmember Longoria's comments as well. There is a redundancy that would happen, because I do read every email that comes through here too and respond to most of them. And, you know, and so, there's... We don't want to detract from anybody that does come here and is able to speak. But for those, like what Rick pointed out, that would love to be here but can't for whatever reason, that we have an alternative avenue, I think we should make that part of our process.
Okay, anybody else? Laura?
And my second part of my comment is related to the questions that were included in the attachment. So, do we want to comment on that as well?
Sure.
So...
Let me... But I think, and we've done that in the past, and depending on how we need to memorialize it or, you know, if we move forward with a procedure, it sounds like the councils would be good with that. Have the opportunity where if something was very important to an individual, either because they physically couldn't get here or didn't have access to email or is out of town, vacation, whatever, where, you know, they could have a friend, a neighbor, a relative, or whatever, you know, come up and speak on their behalf. That certainly would work, so.
Sure.
Is the council good with that? Okay.
And then my next comments were, obviously, I know everyone up here is for citizen engagement. So, we want to encourage public comment. But we've had some inconsistencies, and Sudhi has brought those out, which is good that we get them locked down. So, with regard to the question about the blend in 2.59, where it is blended, my comment on that is that we need to separate that out, as you suggested. The... There is a reference to the campaign contributions of $250 or more. And in regard to that, I feel like the city should provide that disclosure form so that we can give our citizens that ability to, at that point, file that form with the city if they're unable to speak that night. We don't have a process to fix that, so I'm in favor of that. The detail of changing debated to discuss, I think that's a better word, for the whole public comment throughout the agenda. And with regard to agenda items that, for example, unfinished business, where we got last time, which is where the topic of the sewer extension landed, and we don't abide by the zoning process laws under that agenda item. I think that for subjects like that, that are very important to the community, we might need to. If... And I don't know what category that is, sewer extension or land use. If it's not necessarily a zoning, it might need to have guidelines that are similar so that the applicant speaks, those in opposition speak, there's a rebuttal period, so.
Steve, do you have a comment on that?
I think we might have to give our legal little chance to research on that.
Yeah, because it's very rare that we have a situation like that. But maybe they could research something. So, as we make a decision moving forward, we can include that in there. Good points. Anybody else? Bert?
I mean, it's sort of along these lines in where we've maybe had some inconsistencies in our public comment that's folks that are on hand of when we accept the cards. I think the rules you stated is, once the item is called, we don't accept any cards. I think in the past, we've kind of flipped and flopped. So, we either need to adhere to that or think about changing that as well. I think we ought to adhere to it and see how that goes versus changing it at this point. But just something that, if anybody else has any thoughts on that?
You know, again, I would agree with that. And I'm guilty as everybody, anybody else in the past, though, again, under the reasoning that I feel like if somebody does come here and they want to speak on it, and sometimes they formulate a thought in their head after they've heard something. So, I'm usually pretty flexible on that, but I'm certainly open to... Yeah, either way. Yeah, it depends on what the council wants to get. Joe?
And this is going to be one of those topics where it's a little bit confusing why somebody would be on one side of the issue or the other. And my experience in terms of participating in well-structured meetings, and I would call our city council meetings well-structured because we follow an agenda, we talk only about those items that are on that agenda. We, to a certain extent, obey Robert's Rules of Order when we're making motions and things like that. The challenge is that if we don't have a rule and don't enforce the rule, then chaos reigns. And so, by having the rule and not enforcing it, what we're really stating is, look, it really doesn't matter. You can bring up an item anytime you want, talk about it whenever you want. And that's... We can't run meetings that way. And so, even though it might not be perceived as the right thing to do, I think the right thing to do is to have a policy and follow it, stick to it. As difficult as that will be, and I think initially, we might see some opposition people getting late, getting here late, getting late, turning in their request to comment late or something like that. But over time, I think that'll work itself out. So, I'm in agreement. We need to have a rule, and we need to live by the rule.
And I would agree that, and let's... We'll put that on the issue when we bring it forward, you know, in a good way. We can, as you say, Councilmember Longoria, at first, you may have a little bit. And I'll step up before, when an item is called, we'll make kind of a last call and remind anybody if they're, you know, give a little bit, you know, a minute or so. And then, well, people will get used to that, and we'll move forward. Anything else? And I hope, obviously, the public realizes this is all in the interest of the public and information and public comment. And I'll give an example. You know, in the past, it hadn't been a problem if there's one or two emails that have came, come in and said, you know, "Please read it into the record." And it takes three minutes. But we very easily could have an issue where 20, 25 people in the audience that want to speak for two or three minutes and come forward. And then, it's real easy for somebody to cut and paste emails. And, you know, we might get 200 emails that say, "Please read this in the record." And all of a sudden, it's, you know, not only disrespectful for the folks here, but could add hours and hours and duplicate. And again, the point that I brought up and everybody else has reiterated, you know, if the public or somebody sends us an email with their position on something, we read it and it, you know, we take that into consideration. So, it's... We treat it just as importantly if, you know, if it was read into the record. So, we certainly are listening, so. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to item number two. Sudhi, do we have any, as we're speaking, a public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do have three.
Okay.
And our first one is from Robin Miller Henry.
Good evening. I'm a resident of the city of Milton. I've been a resident since before the city was here. And I want to first thank you all for all your dedicated service to our community. It takes a lot of effort, and I appreciate it.
Do you mind, I'm sorry, just reading into the record your name and address?
My name is Robin Miller Henry. I live at 110 Oak Heights Court, Milton, Georgia.
Thank you.
I attended the meeting a few weeks ago about Providence Park, where they presented their initial plan. The revised plan that you have today does not reflect, in my view, the comments that were expressed in that meeting, not at all. Many were very concerned about the plan, and I see very little change to the plan as presented to you today. Providence Park is a beautiful park. I don't know if you've all had a chance to visit the park and go to each of its edges, but it's magnificent. And the Eagle Scout trails that the Eagle Scouts put in and the benches and all the time and effort that they put in highlight the true nature and beauty and peace of the surroundings of that park. ADA compliance is important for all of our parks. I understand those laws very clearly as a lawyer myself. But the level of paved paths that they have included in that park are not necessary for ADA compliance. In addition, I believe that they will take away from the beauty of the park. In addition, I also believe that we passed this amazing tree ordinance recently. I think it's a unique tree ordinance. And I'm very proud to say that I'm a member of this community for that ordinance. And I believe that this plan will kill many trees, which seems to be in violation of that ordinance. The pay... And the number of paved paths that they're suggesting would kill many of the trees in the surrounding area to put concrete over their roots and branch, or their roots, and it would kill them. In addition, the area that they have set aside for sunlight, they have a grassy area, a large grassy area, in an area that right now has no grass and has a lot of rock. And then ultimately, trees in that area would destroy a lot of trees as well. Surveys were done in the community about what we want in our parks. And those were awesome, but they were pie in the sky. If you could have anything in your parks, what would you want? And that's what everyone completed. So, to take those in a vacuum and apply them to each one of our parks without truly understanding the nature of the park... the nature and beauty of that park, is inconsistent and illogical. And I think that those surveys need to be considered in light of all the different park areas that we're considering, and all the different things that we'd like to have for our community, and not try to put all of those ideas in one small area. With the purchase of Milton Country Club, there are 18 holes worth of more open public space, and some of those activities that are contemplated in the plan for Providence Park could be accomplished much more easily and effectively there. Some of those activities include an area for small concerts in an open grassy area, a large playground could easily be placed right near the country club center. All of these could easily be done in an ADA-compliant manner, without the expense, and without destroying the natural beauty that exists at Providence Park. I have to credit the Eagle Scouts for helping to create and magnify the majestic nature of this park, and I believe that this plan will destroy what they've done, in large part. And to take a lesson from a John Mayer song, let's not pave paradise and put up a parking lot, let's not be required to go into museums to see our trees. This is a beautiful area, and let's keep it, and let's remember who we are as Milton, let's not be Brookhaven, let's not be Johns Creek, let's not be Alpharetta, let's protect the incredible beauty that we have within our community, that we are graced to have by God. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Sudi, if you'd call the next speaker.
Next speaker is William Shellhorn.
Mayor and Council, thank you. I'm William Shellhorn, 225 Orchard Ben Trail, and I'd like to echo Robin's position on this. I've lived in Milton for 25 years, 24 years, and up until the park was closed, I would take my family there, over, you know, every, you know, several times a year, over and over again, we enjoyed the trails, and just the fact that you drive down this gravel road to a trailhead, park your car, get out, and get lost for an hour or two on these beautiful trails. I don't think this plan serves the, you know, what Milton's all about, compared to, you know, just, maybe just preserving it, leaving it as it is. Another thing that I noticed on the plan, that I feel, I mean, I've fished that lake for years and years, and putting buoys around a quadrant-off area is, to me, I wouldn't fish it anymore. You know, I would say that 95% of the fish that I've caught in Providence, and I've caught a lot of fish, I didn't catch in that little buoyed area. I caught them in a lot of different areas, so my thoughts are, you know, preserve it and leave it as, much of what is there, you know, leave it as it is. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Steve Sap.
Hi, I'd like to record to show that "Pave Paradise and Put Up a Parking Lot" was originally a Joni Mitchell song, I believe. But, anyway, shows my age right there. I live at 13435 Providence Road, which is the western boundary of the park on down by the lake, so, you know, very interested...
Steve, if you wouldn't, just state your name, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for the record.
Yeah, Steve Sap. So, very interested in it, and I think my biggest concern is, and all the planning and everything has been very fluid, and so I don't know if it's like defined exactly what we're going to do, but I would like to make sure that I, I'm on record as saying that I strongly hope that we will close the park at 7:00 at night, or whenever. To me, I don't think it's a good idea to have the park be open at night, you know, and because I don't think we should have it open at night, I don't really see the reason why we should have camping grounds in there. I know there's a space over here in the, you know, the left side, the western part of it, where they have like 10 campsites for fires. And, you know, the way the weather is right now, it's hard to imagine anything catching fire and actually burning, because it's so wet, but the day will come where it will be very dry, and if you just have a bunch of people out there setting fires, even with the best of intentions, that can get out of hand, and if it does, bye-bye park, bye-bye Steve's house, bye-bye Pat's house, bye-bye, you know, a lot of places, you know, maybe that's worst-case scenario, but that's a fear that I definitely have. I agree with this lady that the pathways, I don't see why in the world we would want to pave them, I think they should just be left natural. Maybe there's a couple of spots where we need to smooth them out or something, but, you know, it's a natural park, it's a beautiful park, and I'm fine with everybody being able to enjoy it, but I do hope that y'all will really think seriously about just making sure that it's not open all the way through the night. We've lived in our house since April, and there's been a couple nights where we've had some, you know, teenagers or something down by the lake, and, you know, no harm, no foul, it's, we haven't had any trouble at all, and I'd just like to keep it that way. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sudi, is that all public comment on this item?
We have one more, from Mr. Scott Fields, and I am in possession of an affidavit verifying that Mr. Fields is representing Evergrace HOA.
Thank you. Don't have a lot of prepared remarks, I thought we were just going to have a discussion, but I am the treasurer, former president of the Evergrace Homeowners Association, which is the park, or the property that is adjacent immediately to the back of the park.
Excuse me, Ms. Field, just for the record, name and address, sorry.
Yes, my name is Scott Fields, I live at 1975 Evergrace Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3009. Again, I'm the treasurer and past president of the homeowners association. We, as, just by coincidence, it was timely that last night, we had our annual homeowners association meeting, and this was very much a hot topic. It just so happens that my property and two other people who are, or at least one other person on the board, happened to be the immediately affected properties. So we just wanted to, we're not opposed to the park, this isn't a complaint, this is more of a discussion item, maybe a request for some additional info as we go forward, but certainly some concerns and questions. I kind of have a laundry list here. Looking at the plan, I think it was overwhelmingly opposed last night, that we don't really want to zipline, that overlooks the back of our property. I actually have a pool, and the last thing I want to do is see somebody ziplining across the woods, that, you know, that sits on top of a hill, and it is immediately, one of the towers is immediately planned for a lot closer than this drawing describes to my property. The parking, we have some concerns about it moving any closer to our neighborhood than it already does, we're not exactly sure what you have in mind, we're not, just curiosity, you know, how did we settle on 115 spaces? Currently, the parking lot comes to the cell phone tower there, and it seems as if in the last meeting, which I wasn't able to attend, it was mentioned that that parking lot would be even coming even closer to our property of our neighborhood, so we'd like a little more clarification on where exactly the parking lot will be situated. Certainly, we don't want it any closer, and with all the property you have on the other side of the street, we're kind of curious why you would encroach on an existing neighborhood versus using the property on the other side of the street. On a positive note, we kind of want to, wanted to explore ideas with whoever the developers are, or the city, on any kind of private access point, because we do see it as a potential enhancement to our property value, so maybe if we did have some sort of easement, or some sort of private access point, we'd like to explore that as well. We also, and this is not immedi, or this has been a longstanding request, there is a cell phone tower there, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's a very tall cell phone tower, and we're curious if there's any way we can explore having that camouflage similar to some of the others you see in the area, such as the one, I think, right behind the Union, if I'm not mistaken, so who do we talk to, how can we maybe, maybe as a compromise on some of these issues, we can at least get that addressed. We've also heard about a greenway easement for somehow accessing the greenway, or linking up the greenway from Fowler Park over through the city of Alpharetta and Milton, and that seems like there was a discussion about how that may or may not come through our property as a neighborhood. We'd like a little more clarification on where that easement, if it exists, you know, would be, and how that would impact our properties. There is a mention about a performance stage, and I, like the gentleman just before me, would be curious why you would need to have any kind of, I don't know if that includes concerts or anything of that nature, but certainly nothing after dark, or after 7, 8 o'clock at night, I mean, this is a neighborhood, we all have small children. I've also spoken to Mr. Craig, he's been very helpful, thank you, about any kind of boundary fencing. We'd certainly like to know what the plans are for the boundary fencing, and how that will situate across our property line as well. My personal property backs up immediately to a trail, and you'd be absolutely shocked how close to the trail the property line seems to be, it's less than a couple of feet. I would have preferred that that be pushed on into the property of the park a little bit closer, or a little bit further. So again, boundary fencing would be a major issue of concern, we certainly don't want the trails to be any closer than they already are to our, to our properties, because as you can imagine, it's on, if you know where I'm talking about, it's actually situated on top of a hill, and it literally would be looking straight down into our property. I echo the previous gentleman's concerns about camping, certainly we don't particularly want to have people back there camping at night, you know, I think certainly having some sort of rigid park hours closing at sunset, or something along those lines would be appropriate. So, I don't know what the venue is going forward for how we get these discussion items addressed, or discussing further, but I'd certainly be interested to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just to clarify, you know, again, public comment is, you know, we listen, but we don't go back and forth, but all of your comments, everybody's taking notes, and we can reach out afterwards, and emails and all that.
Very good.
Because this is just a work session, we're not going to make any decisions tonight.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Sudi?
I have our last comment, and that's from Charles Lancelot.
It's Charlie Lancelot, I live at 13372 Providence Park Drive in Milton, it's the last house on the left, just before you go into the park. I haven't mentioned it before at these meetings, but I'll mention it now, I probably know those trails pretty darn well from the fact that I'm the guy that kept those trails clear all years that the park was closed. We want the house to be next to the park strictly, and specifically because of the fact we wanted to be next to a park with running trails in it, I'm a day-to-day runner. Those trails right now are not nearly as runnable as they were when that park was open. They've just, you know, they haven't been able to be maintained, you know, the way they were maintained when the park was officially opened, and was maintained as a multi-use facility. I understand, I'm very sensitive to the concerns that we've heard at this meeting and previously about the modifications being made, or contemplated to be made to their trails. Actually, the number of runners that I've seen using that trail, including myself, just about every day, as I said, they, the park has potential to be absolutely beautiful, running, natural running facility, to rival the quality and the capacity, the running capacity of any of the greenways, which I run frequently also. So my position is, having the experience that I've got with this park, these trails, and with the trails and the greenway, although I understand and fully respect the opinions that I've heard, I'm not nearly as concerned about any loss of natural quality, natural appearance, or damages of trees, from having the paved paths. The way the park is being contemplated now makes it very, very similar in its capacity and its utility to the greenways. I never had the feeling that the green, I think somebody mentioned Fowler Park and the greenway up there, the combination there of boardwalk and pavement and natural surfaces is pretty much what we're talking about here, and I never got the feeling that that was not very, very natural. In terms of the way that the park is being contemplated now, for those that have been here, back before the days it was closed, I mentioned this at the last meeting, the configurations that are being contemplated today are very, very similar to the way the park was configured when it was open. The nature center, there is a nature center there now, we had canoeing on the lake before. One reason I understand that, for the buoys, is that in those years, there wasn't the issue that there is today with residents across the lake objecting to park users, or kayaking or canoeing, going onto their half of the lake. Now that's a problem today, it wasn't a problem before. Now, it doesn't have to be buoys, I think at the last meeting I mentioned, it could be like a little rope, like you see in swimming pools, those little egg-shaped, anything that would prevent incursions from people using the lake, and I'm fully in support of the use of the lake as it was used before. In fact, there was a trailer, a canoe rack trailer by lakeside before, and the canoes were there for rent, and they were used. People would also take their boats out there and they would fish. Frankly, I love the concept of the boardwalk over the wetlands, which again, is very, very similar to the, to the, to the greenways, the various greenways. So in sum, I certainly share the concerns that we've heard here tonight about after hours, we used, before, before the City of Milton was incorporated, we used to have tremendous problems with late-night activity, drinking, yelling, screaming, God knows what, and in those days, you had to call the Alpharetta Police, and you were lucky if they came out the same night. So I can certainly understand the issues that are being raised, but I think those are unmanageable and all controllable. And the only thing I really wanted to point out again, is that having seen that park and used it and lived with it and whatnot, in its really good years before it was closed, having kept it open for my own purposes, just to run it, in all the years that it was closed, and seeing what's being planned for it right now, one man's opinion, I see it as a really nice restoration to what it once was, and it was really a really beautiful park, so that's why we bought the house next to it, and I think it can be that same sort of park again. And I'm only tooling to talk one-on-one to anybody that has any issues in private, in terms of what their concerns are, and what I might be able to do in terms of easing some of the issues or concerns, so I think it's a good plan, and we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all the speakers. Okay, Sudi, is that the last speaker?
That is, sir.
Okay, if you want to read the item, sound item.
This item is discussion of Providence Park. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The process to create a master plan for Providence Park was started last spring, and we have had two well-attended meetings, public meetings, we've had many focus group meetings, we've done a lot of research, we've worked to engage the public. This plan was presented to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board at their last regularly scheduled meeting, and they approved the plan, they voted to approve the plan by unanimous vote. And with this, I'd like to turn it over to our designers from Barge Design, which is Steve Provo and Reagan Carr.
Good evening, I am Steve Provo, I'm a principal with Barge Design Solutions, formerly JB Plus A. I'm here with my colleague Reagan Carr, she's a senior landscape architect with our firm, and also a senior park designer. And as Jim mentioned, we've had, been going through a process with the city since last spring to do the design work for Providence Park, and had gone through a process of analysis of this site, and research on past elements that have been on the site, and all the natural and physical conditions of the site. We presented those to the public and asked for feedback about what kind of elements the city would like to see out there, what concerns and issues they had, and based on those, developed some concepts that we reviewed with the city staff, and developed from that a preliminary master plan, and that's what we had recently presented to the public to get additional feedback, and as Jim mentioned, we also presented that to the Park Recreation Advisory Board. Tonight, what we want to do is present to you the draft final plan that includes comments that we had gotten from the public at our previous meeting, and feedback from city staff. We'll take a look at, Reagan will describe to you the master plan, all the elements of that plan, and answer any questions that you might have about it. This is the scope of work that we had gone through previously, as I had mentioned, the data collection, site analysis, concept development, preliminary master plan, and right now, we're in the draft final master plan phase. The next step for this process will be to finalize a cost estimate for the project and develop... and develop a phasing plan for that project to be presented to this council. So unless you have any questions about the scope and where we're going next, I'll turn it over to my colleague Reagan Carr.
Is there any questions right now?
I'm sorry. So in what we're seeing today, where the, from the last time that was presented to the public, are those comments incorporated in this plan?
Yes, what we did is we took note of the comments that we got during the meeting, and we also received comments through emails and collected all of those and then reviewed them with city staff to determine a way forward, and this plan includes those, that way forward. So it does include the changes that we discussed with city staff.
Thank you. Evening. Okay, so what you have in front of you is exactly what, well, within, within the reason of what we had adjusted based on comments that Steve had just mentioned. This is the preliminary final draft master plan, obviously still open for revision. So just basically starting from, from the, from the very beginning, the entrance road coming in is Providence Park Road to the north, is Providence Lake, just for orientation. At the park entrance, what we decided to do was, due to the narrowness of Providence Park, Providence Park Road, we're suggesting that it be widened just within the park properties, just for functionality as well as emergency vehicle access. The current parking lot houses roughly 11 cars, and we find that if this park becomes a more usable park, you're going to need additional parking. And so we have extended the parking lot. Obviously, this does not have to be fully paved. It could be a gravel lot, it could be a combination of pavement and purview surface parking bays, for instance. The driveway areas would potentially need to be asphalt just because of the emergency access that would have to happen. The current plan maintains access to the existing cell tower. There was a question about that. I believe the city does have an agreement with the owner of the cell tower for a certain number of years after that, it would go away, I guess. It provides a sidewalk connection from the park boundary into the park, and you'll see, notice that there is an arrow connection right at the property, property line, and that is to allow for future greenway connection along Providence Road. There was some discussion earlier about where we might tie into the greenway coming through, and it would be along Providence Park Road more than likely.
So just to be somewhat on the same page, that yellow box at the bottom of that depiction...
That's the cell tower.
Oh, that's...
That's the cell tower.
Where's the connection point?
Right at the property line, right in here, there's a little yellow arrow.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
If you use your pointer, it'll show up on the screen.
Yeah, right here. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, in addition to the new parking area, we provided a restroom facility to accommodate trail users. It would be located right at the parking lot, one for easy maintenance and also for kind of a policing of the park, and that would be, you know, available to the camping site, which I'll mention here in just a moment. One of the things that we wanted to do with this park, parking lot, was to separate vehicular and pedestrian traffic, which is why we've located all the parking at the front of the park. We didn't want to bring traffic into the park, we wanted to keep that separate. There is limited vehicular access along what is currently the driveway that leads into the deeper part of the park, but it would be controlled with removable bollards. Again, it would be only accessible for emergency vehicles or delivery access to the nature center, again, which I'll, I'll talk to you about in a second. Off of the, the parking lot area, we have the woodland camping area. Now, this area, the camping accommodates or is located in what is currently the picnic area, it's on top of a knoll. The idea is that for this camping would be provided for just scouts or church groups, and it would be by special permit only. So there would be no overnight camping, just for, you know, Joe Random, it would, it would require a special permit. It is proximate to facilities, restroom facilities and parking, that is due to, you know, the overnight potential. Wanted to have access to that, and that's through the multi-use trail as well as natural surface trails. It's in the woodland setting, as I mentioned, it is up on that knoll that is currently a picnic area, and it was intended to provide at least 10, 10 campsites or tent sites of living areas.
I want to use this to show where it is on the screen.
Okay. Okay. So the tents, tent site, living areas are the little brown squares that you see there. The idea basically is that it would just be a graded-out flat site. It wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be like a lean-to or anything like that, but just a place where you could put your tent.
All right, it's a platform for somebody to set up a tent if they wanted to.
Yes, exactly. Mentioned woodland setting, okay, we're going the wrong way.
So the area there, between the parking and the road that leads down to the nature center, so the light gray and the dark gray intersection right there, that's sort of the...
This one here?
Yeah. The nexus into the park itself. You're talking about having removable barriers that would prevent vehicular traffic from entering the park, but we don't really have a plan for some kind of a gate or fence or something that would keep people from getting into the park at any time, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, the idea is just to limit the vehicular traffic into the park.
Right.
So it would be through bollards or barrier, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I, we've shared, we were showing an idea for a shared fire pit. The idea is not to have multiple fire rings everywhere, just to keep it a controlled, controlled area, and that again would have to go through city approval, fire code, that sort of thing. There, we're showing also an outdoor classroom amphitheater style, amphitheater style, and that's what you see up through here. That would just be terrace seating, like an amphitheater. And then this square that you see over here is a medium-sized picnic pavilion to provide a rental opportunity when, when the campsites are not being utilized, or it could be used for, again, church groups or scouts. That would, a medium-sized picnic pavilion would be roughly eight picnic tables within it. As I mentioned, the existing driveway would lead into the park core. We're maintaining that access, again, as I said, for delivery purposes and emergency access. The building that you see here is the nature center. We're recommending that the current facility be demolished. We've read through the, the report on the building. It is, seems like it would be more expensive to update it than it would be to just rebuild. But we're, so we're recommending a 6,500-square-foot nature center with lake-overlook deck areas, exterior restrooms, so that they can still be utilized during times when the nature center itself is closed, and then also meeting rooms would be included and display areas with them.
And that is in the same footprint as the, the current nature center?
Yes, yes, yes. Behind that is an event and picnic lawn area. It's roughly a half acre. You can see the backside of it, there's kind of like a hatch, and we're suggesting that there may be like a pollinator field or anything like that, something to show kind of a new transition of what, what, like a successional transition of what could happen within, within that area, since that is the area that was contaminated at one time. So there could be some signage to go along with it, explaining the, the whole process behind it. There is a small shelter that could be used, again, as for picnic, it's also just there for an area to go to and implement whether you have someplace to go. This whole core area is accessible via, via the multi-use trail. It, the loop road that you see here that would allow for vehicular access would need to be paved. The other areas that we'll talk about a little bit not necessarily have to be asphalt, it could be another form of material that would allow for accessibility. Also, within the, the core park is an inclusive playground. This is, we're showing it as a 13,000-square-foot playground. And what we're not, what we're envisioning here is not your traditional playground equipment, not the bright oranges and yellows and greens and stuff like that, but something that would blend more with the, with the site itself, but be inclusive to all children of abilities and ages and that sort of thing. So the main feature, the main draw with the quarry, performance green, which is adjacent to this area through here. There is a breach in the dam at this, this point, which has essentially flooded your, the quarry area. I don't know if you've ever been inside of that quarry. A colleague of mine and I have walked through that, and it's gorgeous on the inside, just with the, the rock walls. But there is a serious potential for something really special to happen there, and with the surrounding rock around it, you would have a good, good acoustics as well as a potential for additional recreation opportunities. So what we're recommending is to utilize the quarry as a performance green. Now, what we're not suggesting is that you have any type of rock concerts out there, U2, you know, large, things like that, but maybe something like a, a small string quartet or a, you know, some type of drama play thing happening in there. So we've, we've located just this small performance stage area, and then at the base of the walls through here, you see these two little buildings, one for staging areas for rock climbing and rappelling on either side. As, as Mr. Lancelot suggested or had mentioned, it was a recreation type that was available in the park prior to it becoming defunct. The quarry overlook, that's this little piece right here, is a 900-square-foot potentially open-air facility, but with the option to have it serve as a zipline station. This could also be a potential rental opportunity, and it provides a vantage point that not many people would have access to without some type of, of structure at the top. Now, we are suggesting that the top of the quarry be fenced off for safety purposes. There are various ways to do that without it looking like chain-link fence, you know, so it could be an attractive barrier, for instance. And again, this is, the quarry itself is accessible via the multi-use trail. It would be, you would have access down into the quarry, and then the lighter gray path that you see would also be like a narrower version so that people, wheelchairs or walkers, strollers, that type of thing could get their way around the performance green. The zipline course is also part of the core facilities. It's an unusual activity that not a lot of parks in the area provide, and we're recommending that it be manned by a third-party operator, not necessarily the City of Milton. We're showing multiple stations at varying elevations. The, the closest station is this, this one right here. You can see that's the northernmost one, and it's roughly 100 feet off the property line. And about, I think it's 10 feet lower, yeah, 10 feet lower than the adjacent property, and I do realize that, that even though it will be an elevated station, there are trees in, in between. The idea of the zipline that we're suggesting is not to go through and clear-cut the whole thing. As you can see, we tried to maintain as much of the, the tree cover as possible, and this again is just a master plan. Obviously, there would be more surveying done, planning done with, if this were to be implemented. This is an accessible station located near the parking lot, so that a person, obviously in a handicap need, could still participate in the zipline course without having to get over into this, this portion of the site, which is a little bit more steep and not nearly as easily accessible. There are a variety of zipline experiences. You have the, the experience of going through the woodland forest and across the quarry and down, you know, towards the wetlands. And it's just, as I mentioned, it's not, not a, not a feature that a lot of parks in the, in the area provide. The natural surface trail that we're showing here, the reason that we have located the natural surface trail on this portion of the site has to do with a lot of the site analysis data that we collected earlier on. This area of the site has some of the larger trees, the nicer trees, and we wanted to offer a complement between natural surface and, and multi-use trail. On the other side of the, the site, there are more of transitional-type trees rather than mature hardwoods, and so there are some that could be smaller trees that could be sacrificed rather than on, on this side of the, the site where the mature trees are. So what we're offering here is a half-mile trail loop to be field-located to minimize the disturbance of those trees, and both Steve and I have, have designed many trails that go through mature woodland forests. There are various ways of bridging routes and essentially just laying out the tree, laying out the paths without disturbing trees. If done correctly, there's, there's little to, little loss in tree, tree cover. There are pedestrian bridges across the drainage ways to provide access, and as I mentioned, it's to balance the multi-use trail. Providence Lake is another amenity that is unusual to a lot of parks in the metro Atlanta area. We're recommending that there is an elevated boardwalk to provide access to the unique wetland and swamp environment. It's roughly .12 miles in length, 10 feet wide. This allows, you know, people to be able to stop and kind of look at something rather than, you know, and not get in the way of somebody that's running across the, the boardwalk. And it just, it, it provides access to a portion of the site that is, is typically not accessible. The area of the lake that is cordoned off with buoys, that was, as Mr. Lancelot had mentioned, it was to kind of contain those users that are within the park and in an effort to keep them off private property across the way. And, you know, these are not intended to be the giant buoys that, that mark channels in, in rivers and oceans and that type of thing, just small, like he had mentioned, the pool, pool buoys. And the activities that we were anticipating to have, happen in, within the lake would be like paddle boarding, or not paddle boarding, excuse me, paddle boats or water safety. One of the things that had been mentioned was that there was a desire to have summer camps back in the park, and so we thought that, well, if you had this water elements, we might as well go ahead and teach some type of water safety along with it. And again, if you have kayaks, you can learn how to row, that type of thing, so that type of water activity. We're showing a, a lake overlook structure and fishing pier located here, just so that you can actually get out into the water and fish from a, a dry surface. But we're also providing banking, bank fishing opportunities. Just because we have these things does not mean that people will not be allowed to walk along the bank. It's just, you know, just another opportunity. And then the Providence Lake is also accessible via the multi-use trail. So while we're talking about the multi-use trail, we're showing a three-quarter-mile multi-use trail loop. As I mentioned, it does not necessarily have to be a paved surface, it could be any form of other acceptable handicap ADA compliant type surfaces. And again, this one could be laid out, again, to minimize tree disturbance and grading techniques, and that's why what we're showing here, it just actually lays out best with the contours, it minimizes disturbance to the existing grade, it minimizes erosion, and becomes, becomes a more sustainable type path. This provides accessibility to the vast majority of the activities within the park. As you can see, those areas that are in red would allow for, well, accessibility, essentially. You can get to the playground, the quarry, the nature center, the lake, and then there's just one section that is not able to be accessible. But you do have an opportunity for a trail loop.
So when you said that the loop was .5 miles, was that the total of all those trails, or is that just the main loop right there?
The, the half-mile trail, it's half-mile trail loop is a natural surface trail that was on the eastern side. The three-quarter miles is the multi-use trail loop, so it would be...
Oh, sorry, right.
It would be down the driveway and then down towards the quarry, along the lake, and then back up the hill. The overall, if you had an overall perimeter trail, that would include this portion of the multi-use trail, and then this portion of the natural surface trail. You take it all the way around on the natural surface trail and pick up the boardwalk as well, you end up with about one and a half miles of trail, perimeter trail. And then, again, as we mentioned before, this multi-use trail connection provides a connection to the greenways, or the future greenway trail along the, the sidewalk that takes you to the property boundary, which would be right through here. So that's what we have proposed. We have... We have, answer questions.
I have a couple. Overall, I generally like the plan and some of the uses are, you know, different and neat and something that could be kind of, you know, really good for the city, you know, also based on public comment, you know, and certainly, you know, in looking at the plan, it looks great, but we have to keep in mind the folks that live around it.
Sure.
So, you know, one, being the parking, you know, again, if that's the absolute best location, but also think about buffers and ways to, you know, shield that or whatever for neighbors. You know, and I kind of want to get the council's thoughts on the ziplining, you know. Part of me says, wow, that's different. Like you said, it was different and something that most places don't have. And I also see it would be a neat way to see some of the nature and not have to disturb it and whatnot. But the thing that sticks out that concerns me, though, is, you know, number one, it's not something that a city would want to have the liability of or, you know, not manning it, have there. But then if you have it, you know, through a private company that's running it, then does that turn the park into, take it away from more of a passive to more of a, you know, like a, an attraction or something like, you know? I would have concerns of that if it would take away from the feel of the park. But I, you know, again, want to hear from the council, see what their thoughts are.
I agree. I think the plan is, and I appreciate all the comments from the public, and I attended the other meeting as well. I think there's a desire to return it to its original, you know, and enhance it. So the ziplining really gives me pause because I feel like it makes a noise, it's up high, it's kind of dangerous, and it's something that, you know, we don't want just everyone showing up to give it a try and, you know, that there might be some danger there. So I think the rock climbing is, you know, a good idea with a, you know, bonded, insured, you know, outfitter that would have a permit, but the ziplining, I'm worried about that already.
Okay, Joe? So was it part of the vision to have, because, I mean, obviously, some of these features are, I would echo, you don't find them everywhere and they're certainly not something that can go unattended. So if there was a zip line in the city of Milton, we would have to make sure that we can control access to it 100%. We would also have to worry about, and it doesn't really matter if a third-party operates it or not, the liability is going to be ours, no matter what we do. It's in the city of Milton, we built it, we sponsored it, I mean, it's our liability. So is the idea that we're going to have like a full-time staff operating this park?
I don't believe that we intended to, I'm sorry. I don't believe that we intended to have full-time staff operating the park. We will have staff maintaining the park, keeping it clean, keeping it, you know, trash picked up, things like that. But I don't think the intention is for us to have a full-time staff personnel there. If we're able to run summer camps, then certainly we would have staff there, but on a full-time basis, that is not the intention at this time.
So how do we control access to some of these features in such a way that we can guarantee they're not accessed when we're not there to operate them? The rock climbing and the zip lines are the two issues there. I mean, I would say, I would add the lake because the lake's just as dangerous as a zip line. I mean, you drown in a lake just as easily as you can fall off a zip line.
I understand. Certainly adequate security measures would have to be built into the design of, you know, the physical construction of the zip line and/or the rock climbing. The lake, I'm not sure how we could literally block that off and have it still be aesthetically pleasing.
So, but it's not the vision of the city, or at least not now, that somebody's going to get up in the morning every day, go to the park, and their job is going to be the park ranger or the park operator or the park staff assistant or whatever we end up calling them, and they're there to make sure nobody is taking advantage of or abusing the facilities.
Not unless that's what you want. But that wasn't, that wasn't the, this was entirely designed to be a program provider on it.
Well, the reason I ask Stephen is this. If this had just been a park with a trail and a lake, everybody's got that. That's very common and everybody understands that that's the way a park works. When you add rock climbing and zip lines and some of these other features, all of a sudden, it's not standard. And so I was thinking, well, maybe we're thinking about how to operate a non-standard park in a different way. So I'm just wondering what your vision was on that.
I think more we were operating off some of the vision that we heard in here for the last couple of years regarding this being a destination, maybe being a little bit of an active park and some of what we received when we were hearing back from the people in the community, whether we would be able to.
I mean, don't get me wrong, a lot of this is real exciting. I just want to know, have we thought about making use of it?
I think my understanding was that the, excuse me, Jim, you know, the zip line, for example, and that's why I was saying that the negative part to me was I didn't want it to look like an attraction and cars lining up and somebody taking, you know, at the gate money for it or whatever. But from what I understood, it would, you'd have to have like a third-party operator at certain times, the rest of the times it would be locked off or cordoned off. But, you know, again, that's how it would have to be handled, probably not by city staff, but, and again, I'm not promoting that, but.
Bert?
So in Columbus, they recently opened a zip line across the Chattahoochee River that goes in tandem with its urban whitewater course. So it's a city-owned type facility, so there's obviously ways to look at that. I think the whole thing's kind of cool. I can kind of, I can kind of get a little bit of heartburn maybe over the campsites and stuff like that, but that's stuff, you know, that we could implement in. I guess the big question is, what's the estimate? How much this, if we were to build it out like this, what kind of money are you talking?
I think you guys had said that would be the, have you done any preliminary estimates?
We have preliminary estimates, but nothing concrete that I would want to just throw it out, throw it out, throw out at you, but good to see.
But maybe, maybe that's something that with our staff could get together later and talk about.
But I do think, and I understand the thought process on why the zip line type thing would give some heartburn and everything like that, but it is, it has been done by municipalities here recently, so it's something we could certainly look into. It is all, it's run by a third-party, the same people that, the outfitter that run the whitewater course, and both of them have been very successful as far as use and stuff like that. I'm sure you all have looked into those, but those are my two cents.
True. Matt?
Yeah, I came to the meeting when it was presented as well and thought you guys did a great job on that too and heard all the comments on all sides of that. There's the balance between making sure we want to keep it natural, of course, then there's the thoughts to restoring it back to what it used to be. So we understand that there was that conflict that was there. I can agree with the parking lot. I think having that more natural would be good rather than just paved. The other stuff too, as an Eagle Scout, I don't have the problem with the campfire, you know, the campground. The zip line is one question that not a lot of people really talking about that I've seen is kind of, maybe we just don't understand it. And I'm a little hesitant to just say no to something without seeing the benefits of it and maybe, you know, going to Columbus, and I think they have one of Sandy Springs down there too, just to see what that potential is, if that's something that we want to do. So I'm open to that idea, but I also think it's important too, the, this would be built in stages anyway, right? So, you know, as we go through, you know, we would leave it up to Jim to figure out the simple things first to make sure we know what those are. We could always say no to something later on as we go through with this. None of this is set in stone.
Right.
So, you know, we want to make sure that as we go through, first, it's accessible to everybody. We want to make sure that the natural beauty is maintained. And then as we go through, then you've got the structures inside, you've got the rock quarry. In the zip line, maybe last, if that's something that we, as a community, decide we want to do that. But as far as an overall general direction, you know, I think it was well done.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Rick?
Rick, you got it.
Go ahead, Babe.
You're good.
Go ahead, Bert.
Okay. Quick question as far as access. I understand, because it's been locked up for quite a while, then we recently opened it, are we looking at doing some type of a gate that we would lock up, close and lock up so cars can't get in there after park hours? So we restrict access versus leaving it? Today, it's an open road, anybody could go back there at any point in time. I know other parks, sometimes they lock up, they'll have a gate that they close, park closes at such and such a time and then you, you close it off and open it in the morning.
That's certainly an operational question. For example, right now at Providence Park, there is a gate that's at the end of the parking lot that prevents vehicles from getting down further. At Bell Memorial Park, the police have been very supportive in terms of locking up the gates for us at the park, albeit right now we have a problem with the gate, but that's just an operational challenge. So I think it'd be well possible, given the positive relationship with the police department and their support of us trying to keep things at the parks, that we could get those, get them locked.
Yeah, I guess that would be one thing I think would, would give the next, the residents that live around there a little bit more peace of mind if we, in fact, would officially close the park, lock it up. I've seen that when you go to other cities, they'll close, they have park hours, you'll make sure you don't lock somebody in there if they've got a car there, but you actually close the park down and it's padlocked, the gates, so a car can't go in to the parking lot. And then you can open it up in the morning, unlock it, and then you have access again.
They did indicate bollards to prevent vehicles from getting deep into the core of the park, so certainly if you simply did a tour through the parking lot to see if there's anybody, any vehicles still in the park.
Yes.
Couple quick thoughts on the fire pits. You mentioned a shared fire pit instead of having 10 single ones. I know if it's primarily going to be for church groups and Boy Scouts, you know, maybe condense that down to a shared fire pit. I think that might be a good suggestion. On the amphitheater, I didn't know if the amphitheater that's being built out here was considered, it probably isn't, since this is going to be brand new. So I was thinking on the amphitheater, when the city staff talks about this, maybe not put that as the priority and let's see what the demand is. But, and the zip, and the zip line, I kind of go along with Matt, let's, before we just say no, let's kind of see, let's listen more from the community, maybe not put it as a priority item. Because I see the zip line more of the fire pits, it's more of church groups and Boy Scouts and more team, a team-building thing than just having it open from eight to five and, you know, you're spraying your kid and let's go rock climbing and ziplining. But those are just my few suggestions upfront, and I do agree with some of the paved trails, maybe not, maybe reduce that down, but I think it's important if we're going to have a playground in the center, a lot of moms are going to have strollers and they're going to run around and then bring their kids to play. So those are just some quick thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just, I wanted to make sure that that entry into the park is very special. It's, it is Milton-esque and I want to do everything we can or at least convey that, that we preserve that as you enter. So as we consider what we will and won't do, I want to make sure that, you know, the parking is in line with what it ultimately becomes. If we decide not to do some of these things and it's phased, that the parking lot does adjust accordingly so that we don't have a big parking lot if we decide not to do some of these things. I walk it several times a week and I do have, you know, there are some property owners that are very close to where the campsites would be. My personal feeling is that campsites would be much better at a park like Birmingham where there are no residences anywhere close by, but that's, it's a much bigger park, so I think it wouldn't be as noticeable. With regard to the nature center, I'm glad to hear it's going in the same footprint. It is deeper into the park and it is, you know, there's a lot of trees, so I'd like to include surveillance of some type because, you know, we have a problem with graffiti and, you know, kids are always going to be attracted to go to those places. So we need to make sure we address that upfront and budget for it. As far as the trails, I agree, where you can on the multi-use trails, save trees and on the more natural areas, that's beautiful. The fencing on the exterior, what would that be?
Right now, it'd just be hog wire.
Floorboard, hog?
The wire, but you could do the floorboard fence or we mentioned that earlier, there's different options.
Yeah.
Yeah, something, and then would the chain link fence be changed out?
Oh, around the quarry?
Yes.
There are other options, you don't have to have that.
The coated or something?
Yes, something that kind of goes away.
Okay, because, yeah, I think we can do better on that. And I just want to make this general comment that when I'm there, we have a lot of our Alpharetta neighbors come, I meet as many of them as Milton, so, you know, I hope that we can at some point start to, you know, share these parks and build, not, you know, duplicate things because they're coming to our unique parks and they have some things that we don't have. So that's just a general comment. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
You know, I just want to say number one, I think overall, it's a very good job. You know, it's a balance and I know we've got a, you know, when I look at it, what's really appealing to me is, number one, it's different. Number two, this almost reminds me of somewhere you'd have to drive 100 miles to a state park or up the mountains or go out west and parks are visited and camped in and, you know, had lakes and whatnot, and it's kind of neat that you could have that within your own city for your citizens. So, you know, to me, that's very appealing. Also, we've got to balance it though too with, you know, we've got residents that live around there and we need buffers and so that they're not inconvenienced negatively. We hope to build it out to where they could be inconvenienced positively, where it's an asset to them too. So, you know, so again, I would, you know, go along with most all of the comments here, but also let's, you know, keep in mind to maybe look at things to, either if they need to move a little to give a little more privacy, you know, parking, camping, things like that, or get some more buffers, you know, make sure that we keep some buffers and add some buffers, things like that too, so that, you know, it's, make it, make to be a good neighbor too for the neighbors there.
One of the things that we will be giving the city is a project document that will document, obviously, all of our meetings and comments and that type of thing, but then within that, we have descriptions of park elements. And so we can incorporate some of the things that you mentioned, increasing the buffers and using natural materials and that type of thing.
And again, to my point, I think it's a good, it's a compromise. I certainly understand some folks would not want anything to be there, it'd just be woods or to go back, you know, to the way it was or less activity. But again, this also gives it access to citizens to enjoy the nature. It's certainly a whole lot less than an active park with ball fields and things like that too, which obviously some people want that too. So it's, to me, it's kind of a compromise, but.
Okay. Matt?
The only other question I would ask, and I don't know from the topography if it's possible or not, but we have the campsite that's on the left side, on the west side, and then that pavilion is right there so close to that property line. Is there any way to move that?
Move the pavilion?
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, maybe.
Yeah, that's, that would be something that if we could, or even if you put that pavilion on the other side, or obviously you have the campsites on that flat right there in the topography, so that was where your thinking was. Of course, I'm sure we can do anything without as much money as whatever we can give you, right? So that's.
Well, that's one of the good things about a master plan is it's not anything that's set in stone. It's just a guiding document, essentially.
Right, exactly. So that may be a thought that we can consider, but that would be what you were talking about as far as compromises go.
Okay.
And I just have one I forgot to mention. I was glad to hear about the playground because there are several equipment companies. One is Natural Playground Company that is very unique and it hardly even looks like a playground. It's so, they use natural materials and it's different, and I think that would be a big draw because it would be different for kids to go there and be in a natural setting with natural playground equipment.
Yeah, that's a great asset. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your work. Okay. Sudi, we'll move on to agenda item number three. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, so if you'll read the item.
This item is discussion of Wall of Fame at Bell Memorial Park. Mr. Jim Craig.
This is our second try at bringing in. This is our second try at bringing an idea of the Wall of Fame at Bell Memorial Park to council. Some of you may recall that in the April 2016 workshop, we came here and had an initial idea of creating the Wall of Fame and at that particular time, the feedback we received, we what we presented was predominantly a Parks and Rec Advisory Board driven process and the consensus we received was that the council would like to have to weigh in on this and have a final vote on this particular topic. As a group, we we put the idea to the side for a little bit as we were addressing other issues. We started working on it in earnest again in 2017. A lot of what you see here, the concepts came from the initial thoughts of the late Mr. Van Cottis and his ideas were then folded into, we had a small subcommittee that helped bring this into fruition. So we're looking to see if we're on the right track of what you would be looking for. The whole purpose here is we want to be able to honor people from the community, both in Milton and from around here. We know that we we want to be able to recognize those who have achieved success beyond the high school level in athletic endeavor, recreation, who participate in our recreation programs and or folks who have been influential in developing these programs for the community. So what we've created here is a rolling one-year process with specific timelines in which nominations would be received at all times. But the deadline for that year's nomination would be September 30. And then the city staff would then go through the nomination process to simply make sure that the statements made by the nominee are in fact true. Person did participate at Notre Dame and played football for, you know, X number at Notre Dame. This would then be turned over to the subcommittee and the subcommittee would then look at all the nominees and create a ballot. The ballot would, the ballot would then be turned over to the voting committee and the voting committee would have to have complete their voting by June 30, verify the votes. We announce who have been inductees, who are inductees, and then have an enshrinement ceremony right after Labor Day and hopefully use some of that energy and excitement that comes from that enshrinement to drive more nominations for the September 30 deadline for the next cycle of the process. Eligibility, we've tried to keep it somewhat open-ended here. We're looking for people who've been resident of the city of Milton or surrounding community and if, because there's people from Alpharetta who participate in Milton programs. We also wanted to include some of the other programs, other parks right here, such as North Park and Webb Bridge, because currently the city doesn't offer softball. So if you have a young lady who's made it all the way to, you know, college softball, World Series type thing, would like to be able to recognize that. Same with soccer, okay? So that's where we're trying to be not so Milton-specific, more community-inclusive. And again, as an athlete, you have to have done something beyond the high school level. I do understand how difficult it is for a young person to achieve, get to the varsity level of high school programming, I do get it, but as we all know in in sports, the pinnacle, the pyramid, it gets tighter, it's harder and harder to get there. So that's what we're trying to recognize. And this was particularly important to several people on the board, that the person has to be of good character. We don't want to have people whose actions in life do not reflect well on the city of Milton. Again, it's a perpetual call, we put it out on the website, we would be pushing various groups to, you know, the social media, promoting it through other activities we have. But again, this just reviews how the Parks and Rec staff will vet each candidate and then the nomination committee creates a maximum of 10 ballots. Once a person has made it past the nomination committee to the ballot, they would be able to stay on the ballot for a maximum of five years. If they don't get elected in five years, then they would roll off. To try and be inclusive and to do something different than what we proposed last time, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board came up with this idea, which is we wanted to take two elected officials, two Parks and Rec Board members and one city staffer to simply look at all the nominees and create the ballot with a maximum of 10. Wouldn't have to be 10, but a maximum of 10. The voting committee, each person in the voting committee would then rank all their nominees. If you have 10 on the ballot, then you rank them one through 10. One gets 10 points, two gets nine points, another line. If you only have six, that's one through six. And so you look at the total number of points that are potentially available. Anyone reaching 60% becomes an inductee into the Wall of Fame. And again, to try and be a little more inclusive, we're also proposing not only elected officials and Parks and Rec Board members, but we would like to, we have not done so yet, but we would like to reach out to the athletic directors of Cambridge and Milton High to help get their input on this process, to try and keep it more of a community-driven type response. And then the special criteria, anyone who is, any committee member who's named as a candidate obviously has to remove themselves in the process. The enshrinement to be done annually at Bell Memorial Park and we're looking to see if we can drive this to become an annual city event, maybe reach to a point that we start to develop this as a, you know, we have a sport awards dinner or something to that effect. And then of course the criteria that we could always make changes to the criteria. So that's the end of the slide show. Any questions for me?
Questions, anybody have questions for Jim on that? All right, Bert?
I really like the idea, Jim, all the way through. My question is this, and I spoke with Scott earlier or last week, I think he talked to a lot of us, is to minimize the council's involvement in it so it's not politicized. So I would I would be in favor of greatly reducing the council elected officials on either either one or both of the portions where you had two and three, in just my opinion.
Anybody else? Matt?
Go ahead, ladies. So the, I'm okay with that as well. I think that, you know, as we as we look at that, you've got, the Parks and Rec Committee has a good program here, I'm okay with how you set it up, but if you want to change it without council involvement, I'm okay with that too. So, you know, I think we'll leave it up to the council to decide if the council should have any involvement with that at all. So I'm okay with that, but I think everything else is good. I'm just trying to figure out how big the space is going to be at Bell Memorial. Do you have any vision of what we're talking about there from a?
We have approximately 100 spaces available. I think we would we would be set for quite some time.
For a little while anyway, until that fills up quickly.
I believe they roll off, correct?
Would they roll off? That was kind of the question over time, what happens? If they're if they do, like.
If we get to the point that we have 100 people up on the Wall of Fame, I would be happy to look at that problem at that point. That would mean we have achieved tremendous success.
Just curious, well, we've seen it before at AYFA when they had their board as well and all the teams and they would roll off.
Oh, on the champions wall?
Yeah.
They they roll off. As we fill up, they roll off. We want to get to the point that it's all filled and then the oldest ones roll off.
Right, so I as a one of these types of things, I don't think they should roll off, is kind of my point. I just wanted to see if we had a plan for if they ever got to that point, long-term in the future. So, but I think it's a good idea. Good job.
Jim, I think it's a great idea too and I certainly support homegrown athletes and my only thought is that, you know, I know how lean we are, our staff, and so I do have a concern about, you know, just this can sometimes be very time-consuming because this community is very passionate about their sports. So my only suggestion would be to allow the Parks and Rec Board to pretty much manage it, you know, and also as far as, you know, maybe if you can look at fundraising to fund it, I think you will be glad that you did so that, you know, if someone is unhappy with your selection, it's just self-funded. Those are my suggestions.
May I comment on that? I think it's a very interesting idea and that's where we were tossed around the idea that if we can get a little momentum, get it going, and maybe by the second or third year, you get to the point that you've built it up enough that you're making a banquet out of it and you use the banquet as the fundraising to help fund the next year's awards.
That's good.
I agree with leaving council out of it. I think Parks and Rec Board would be good with that. And as far as people, I guess my personal opinion, like I was at Hopewell Baseball Tryouts and there was, you know, Chipper Jones was there, there were numerous, there was NFL quarterback there, there was, there, what I'm saying is there's a lot of pro athletes that live in Milton and I would like for this to be more people who have grown up in our programs.
Yes.
And that's just because I can see this maybe getting carried away sometimes, so that's all, but I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Again, Jim, I think it's a good idea. I would have a, one idea I like is, you know, having Parks and Rec Board involved with the nominations and voting, but also the athletic directors made from high schools bring a little profession, you know, that's their job, they see the athletes every day whatnot. I would agree with everybody else. I have concern about putting in on elected officials, whether it's me or, you know, choosing other elected officials, you know, that could be tough in the community because there's obviously going to be, you know, everybody's going to have a different perspective and who deserves it. So I would prefer to have that hands off with a, you know, some experienced folks that are in charge of that.
Certainly understand that.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other discussion or anything else? If not, we'll conclude our work session. Thank you, guys.